I don't know. You can do that. You can literally just put my hand on my elbow and just go. What would I do? Mike Smith did it one time. Motorcycles. He leaned on his tank and he's like, didn't remember like 20 miles of driving.
Ooh, that's scary.
Yeah, because I kept pulling up next to him. He was just like... I pulled out of the example and he was like, "My..."
Was that four?
No, it was three. He was just like... He says, "I always remember..." That's like dead man.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. drank anything from that, right? That's what happens. I mean, I was like, "Oh, no." We just think... Well, so our number is... Something like... So we're in the three plus.
She went to the store. It doesn't matter.
But I'm working with you. Yeah.
For five thousand and...
I think they were.
He just said, "What?" He must have cleared the world.
But I'm not trying to avoid this. I'm in that Christmas tree there. I don't have a chance to be myself. I don't have a nice... So you're just... Yeah. So I got it. How about your...
And it's like small, like...
Yeah. It's a common...
We've got 26 acres. Oh, yeah. Or this case, a day or two. And all of that.
Do you have any...
All of it included in open space and not built in. Just for like ten years.
Again, we're...
Okay.
You all check here? So... Okay, it's seven o'clock. We'd like to welcome you to the January 3rd first meeting of the year. Anybody able to join the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America. To the three hundredth for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in its whole... ...and in its justice for all.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Fisshani?
Here.
Mr. Cardina?
Here.
Mr. Cosell?
Here.
Mr. Mixel?
Present.
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Tussow?
Here.
Okay, let's see. We've got...
Mr. Chair?
Here.
I'm sorry, I'm recording.
It's already been taken off. Yeah, it is. There was a published in the paper that there was an oil change place or something. It was supposed to be coming. Can you hear me okay with it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. The oil change place was going to be coming in and there was controversy on Facebook, you know? All more crap coming into town, but that thing's been withdrawn. It is not coming in today. It is not in at all. They've withdrawn their application. So anybody that's listening, instead of writing and complaining about how we do things wrong, just be aware that it is not true. Okay? It's fine.
So that's not coming?
It's not coming in.
At all?
Withdrawing their application.
I know.
Yeah. So anyways, that said, why don't you go ahead? Can I start with first one, Fairfield? I guess first.
Fairfield Inn by Marriott, a sign located at 915 Hart Road. The applicant Rebecca Toomes of Rochester Signs is requesting sign approval associated with the replacement of three existing building-mounted signs and one monument sign to reflect rebranding of the Fairfield Inn on a 2.19 acre parcel located in an HC high-intensity commercial district under section 265-7 of the Code of the Towne Webster.
Yes, ma'am?
Ma'am. Yeah, like you said, we are going to replace the existing channel letters. So there's three sets on each side of the building. And they're going to be 30-inch sets, which is the same as one of the sets. The other set was a 24-inch set and it's going to be a 30-inch set. And same with the third. And then we're also going to be replacing the monument sign. There's not going to be any digging. We're just going to replace the top cabinet with a brand new cabinet.
Now, the monument sign is going...
It's the same exact place. So the base and everything is just there. It's just that top portion with the Fairfield Inn part on it that gets replaced.
Okay. I don't see any issues with it. Letters just look a little bit better. Fairfield by Marriott and...
Yeah, it's actually less letters and, you know, new LEDs, more efficient.
Yeah.
Did they put the addresses on the monument sign or the street numbers anyways? Is that possible?
Let's see. We're putting them on the building. Is it not on the monument?
It looks like it's on... It doesn't show it on the monument.
But you would like the 915 to be on it?
It's got a 915, but I don't know where... I think that's on the...
The 915 is on the building.
It's on the building.
Yeah.
And that's newly being added to the building? It looks like.
Yeah, the trouble is, you have to drive here. You have to look at the canopy in order to notice the 915. If you are in Valmont Place, you don't need the address. So really, the ideal place would be to have it on your monument sign so people going down the road.
Do you want that to be eliminated? Or can it just be vital?
No, that can be... I don't think that... Personally, I don't think it needs to be eliminated. As long as it's on there because people will be...
It's going to be just white with a blue background?
Yeah, we'll probably just do white. And we can either stick it right under Marriott or we can put it on the base. So it's like separate from the sign.
Whatever works. Just somewhere within that area, the sign.
Okay. Do you want me to just get a new drawing too?
No, no. Just add it on there.
Okay. No problem.
It would probably be better on the base since there's nothing on the base anyway. So then it keeps the sign clean.
That's what I was thinking and like they don't have to change anything. They would just be adding it.
All right, that's fine. All right, anything else, anybody? You guys okay with that?
Good?
Looks good.
No, we got to work where you were best. Go away. Do a secret.
Towne Webster Plan and Word Considered Request by Appletune Rebecca Toomes of Rochester Signs to replace three existing building-mounted signs and one monument sign for Fairfield and located at 915 Hart Road on a 2.19 acre parcel having the SPO number 079.11-1-21.2. Plan and Word classifieds the proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617.5C2 of the State Department of Water and Wildlife Regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
Do you have any new stuff? Jerry? All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Somebody make a motion for approval for Fairfield Inn sign?
I'll make a motion for the Fairfield Inn, yeah, for the Fairfield Inn Marriott sign located at 915 Hart Road for to replace three existing building-mounted signs and replace the one monument sign. And the monument sign will have the street number on there.
As presented. You guys present? Okay, please. You have a motion? Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I guess you're all set.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Second item on the agenda tonight Frontier Kitchen Sign located at 117 Ridge Road. The applicant is Elevated Sign Solutions. We're requesting sign approval associated with the installation of a 44 square foot building-mounted sign to reflect a new business within the Jackson Crossing Plaza on a 3.05 acre parcel located in an HC medium intensity commercial district under section 265-7 of the Code of the Towne Webster.
Sir?
Yeah. So we're working with Frontier Kitchens to put up a new set of LED channel letters. They're not officially in the building as of right now. From what I understand, it's the old Rochester and MacArthur Place. I believe it's getting subdivided up into a couple of different spots. So they're just going to occupy the area that you can see on the drawing here, the right side of the old building. So proposing channel letters on that bottom orange section. That's what was there previously. Rochester and Ole and MacArthur had two sets of a little bit smaller letters there. They were... They used to be yellow. So these are just going to be backlit, stud-mounted, and we're going to go with gray line on the faces just to match all of their branding. Frontier Kitchen has another facility out in Batavia with similar signage, so we're just trying to match that for their location.
What do they sell? Obviously kitchen stuff?
Yep, so they do kitchen cabinetry.
They're giving you some commercial time.
Huh?
They're giving you some commercial time. Big name is...
My father actually owns the business. But yeah, they do kitchen cabinetry.
Is that what it is there?
Yep.
Okay. Now, the color, if the picture, that's fine. I think the signs are right, but the color, how do these shows?
It's a little bit hard to tell in the picture, especially depending on what kind of picture you have. But once they have... So it'll have a black trim cap around it as well, so it'll kind of outline the letters. It's a little bit difficult to show.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
But you can see kind of what I was going for there. But again, once they're eliminated, I don't think there's going to be any issue with contrast there and stuff.
Okay. Anybody make a motion?
No, it's great that something going in the building. Finally.
I know, right?
For a long time.
Yeah. Okay, want to do a secret?
The Towne Webster Plan and Word Considered Request by Appletune Elevated Sign Solutions to install a 44 square foot building-mounted sign for Frontier Kitchens located at 117 Ridge Road on a 3.05 acre parcel having the SPO number 080.03-1.31. Plan and Word classifieds the proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617.5C2 of the State Department of Water and Wildlife Regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
Okay, do you say? Can the motion is second in favor?
Aye.
All right, somebody make a motion for it?
I'll make a motion to approve the Frontier Kitchen sign located at 117 Ridge Road as presented. Drawing number on here. Project number F22121.
Second. Okay, the motion is second in favor?
Aye.
All right, good luck with it.
Very good, thank you.
Good luck with your business.
I appreciate that.
Third item on the agenda tonight Knockable Bowl Sign located at 927 Holt Road. The applicant Vital Signs on behalf of Jamie Scalzo is requesting sign approval associated with the installation of a 33 square foot building-mounted sign to reflect a new business within the Town Center Plaza on a 6.40 acre parcel located in an HC high-intensity commercial district under section 265-7 of the Code of the Towne Webster.
Hey, how are you all? So we're just requesting exterior channel lettering for our sign. It's where the old ganky candle used to be.
What was there, I'm sorry?
It was the ganky candle.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They were there about two and a half, three years ago. So we've started our build-out process, working with Vital Signs. They are 34.75 in height and the sign width is 210 inches. So they'll be just white backlit channel letters.
Okay. What's the background? Are you putting background on it or...?
No, we're just going to put it on what they have there currently. It's going to be flush mounted, so.
All right, anybody?
Does the facility need to be cleaned up with the old sign?
No, everything has been cleaned up and looks good and ready for install, so.
All right, anybody, any?
What is Knockables? Where is that?
So Knockables was started in Minnesota. My husband and I bought into the franchise and we're bringing it here. We're actually the first ones in New York to open. The goal is they have about 12 locations between here and Buffalo. So, yeah, it's acai bowls, all organic, gluten-free, soy-free bowls, and they're different flavored patees and they're really, really good.
Should have brought one of your menus.
I know. Oh, well, so I have coming soon flyers coming in. As a few articles with our menus.
Good luck with it.
Thank you, yes, we're very excited.
Great. Okay, well, the motion?
The Towne Webster Considered Request by Appletune Vital Signs on behalf of Jamie Scalzo to install a 33 square foot building-mounted sign located at 927 Holt Road on a 6.48 acre parcel having the SPO number 079.1-1-29.122. Plan and Word classifieds the proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617.5C2 of the State Department of Water and Wildlife Regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
Motion, second?
One second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion for the approval? Before we do, is 210, it meets the requirements of...
Okay, Josh, correct? Yes, it's actually substantially smaller than what they're allowed.
Okay. Okay, motion, anyone?
I'll make a motion for the Knockable Bowl Sign located at 927 Holt Road for a 33 square foot building-mounted sign as presented.
Okay. Second. Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Fourth item on tonight's agenda. 189 Basket Road Accessory Building located at 189 Basket Road. The applicant is Timothy Lawson, who is requesting elementary final site final approval and appearing associated with construction of a 1,200 square foot accessory building on a 1.19 acre parcel located in an L.L. large lot single-family residential district under sections 269-11 and 350-36 of the Code of the Towne Webster.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
My name is Tim Laughton, this is my wife, Marie Laughton. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you too.
So we're requesting a review of the accessory building. It's 24 by 50 and will have a 10-foot wide lean-to off one of the long sides, the north side. Building will be 10 foot tall. Yeah, that's a representative. They're kind of hard to come up with the drawings and those together.
Are those the same colors that you're going to have then?
Yeah, the colors, yes. We're kind of working on that.
Is there going to be water, electricity out there? Gas?
It'll have electricity.
And the purpose of it is?
Basically stores on the car, motorcycle, boat guy, so just try and get it undercover. And other places. It's really warfarin.
Josh?
Yes.
And paperwork here, it shows it as a pen subdivision. But we've got it as preliminary file.
Yeah.
That's for 169.
Yeah, 169 Phillips Road is the next item. That's...
Okay, all right. You're on the forum. Yes, okay.
Well, 189 Basket Road, the application is circle concept, so...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Maybe that is a mistake.
Yeah, that's, yes.
It's so... But it was published as preliminary.
It is published though.
Correct, correct.
Okay, then that's good. Okay, so now we're... Okay, you meet all setbacks, okay?
Yes.
Now, you've got a 10-foot overhang you're showing there, right?
That's correct.
Are you including that in your square footage or...?
That's not in the square footage. There'd be an extra 10 on the north side of that building. I didn't know if we had to include that or not, but if it's not enclosed. It's just a roof, is what it is.
Is it the same height or...?
There'll be eight foot at the... It's 10 at the wall, eight foot outside. Yes, sir.
So there's no intention of closing that in there?
No.
Now, how far are you from the actual wood deck of your house?
I would say that it's about even with the wood deck. Looking at it from the... Yeah, I think the deck is 16 feet wide.
From the looks, I mean, looking at the side of your house, the way it scales out, like where it shows 21 foot, that's about the same space as that. So I'm guessing it's about 21 foot from your house? 20, 21 foot?
I think we measured, was it 16 or 17 feet?
From the house, right? Yeah, it looks like it's close.
Yeah, I did my best to scale this thing.
Okay.
Well, it looks like the lines are large enough to accommodate that size.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't interfere with anything. You don't... You want sewer there or something?
Septic.
That doesn't interfere with it?
No, the septic's actually on the south side of the house and then the leach field's actually in the front of the house. There is an engineered leach in front of it.
Okay. All right, well, I don't have any issues with it. Anybody?
No, it's nice.
Yeah, you okay there?
Yeah.
Anybody, you guys heard it?
Is that neat? If we were, if it wasn't closed, would it still be there?
I'm sorry?
If the open area wasn't closed, would that still, would that be within the allowed limits?
Yeah, it still fits okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's quite a ways from all that. Okay, again, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here wishing to speak either for or against this project? Seeing anyone, we'll close it, bring it back to the board. Anybody? Any concerns or...? Now, are you building it yourself or is somebody doing it or...?
While we're still talking contractors, it'll be built by contractor.
All right. Anybody want to do a secret?
Towne Webster Plan and Word Considered Request by Appletune. Timothy Lawson is constructing a 1,200 square foot accessory structure located at 189 Basket Road on a 1.19 acre parcel having the SPO number 051.01-1-3.105. Plan and Word classifieds the proposed action as a type 2 action under section 617.5C9 of the State Department of Water and Wildlife Regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
Can the motion do a second?
One correction I'd like to add to that is the name, if Lawson, L.A.W.S.O.N., is Lawson, L.A.W.T.O.N.? I don't know if that...
L.A.W.T.O.N.?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I've got on this sheet.
That's correct.
Okay, we'll make sure it's correct.
Okay. Anyways, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, for accessory buildings, somebody... I'll just read this one. Yeah, I can just... I'll make a motion to approve the accessory building at 189 Basket Road. Make that subject to access, part of the code is 22536. One building, I'll just quote highlight it. The building conforms because it's set in back of the house.
Correct.
That covers that and also should be larger. It's not any larger than 25 square feet of the main building. It's under 25. Let's see, the accessory building is more than 500 square feet. We got that, that's why you're here. No accessory building should be higher. You're only 10-foot high, I believe, right?
It's 10-foot at the sidewall. So I would guess the peak is probably somewhere around 14.
Okay, and your house is higher than that?
Yeah, it's...
Need that. Got a plot plan showing accessory building dimensions, you're showing that. Okay, then what we'll do is I'll just make this subject to the accessory buildings of the Towne Code at 22536.
We need to say for personal use only?
Yeah, good point, yeah. As for personal use only?
No, no living out there.
You're putting electric in the water?
Yeah, just electric.
Right? All right, that, we have a motion, do a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Fisshani?
Aye.
Mr. Cardina?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
I guess you're all set?
All set, yep. Thank you very much. Take care.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Was it building on the sign? Oh, I'm sorry. If folks... Hey, guys. Hey, come back. Yeah, I'm still trained.
Oh, I thought we supposed to say Plumb again or...
Yeah, we got...
We just had one more time for final. We did Plumb again. You're fine.
I'll make a motion, yeah. Just kidding. If Rajan was here, he would not let us do it all. It had two separate motions. So, okay, I'll make a motion for the final approval for this same project at 189 Basket Road, subject to all preliminary approvals and significant construction commenced within one year. That's the motion, all in favor? Second? Three, second?
Three, two.
Somebody second that?
Four.
Okay, have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right.
Here, one and number five?
Yep.
The last item on tonight's agenda is Phillips. The last item on tonight's agenda is Phillips North Subdivision located at one sixty-nine Phillips Road. The applicant of one sixty-nine Phillips Road, L L C, is requesting sketch plan review of the proposed four-locked, single-family residential subdivision and site plan on an eleven-point-nine acre parcel located in a par one, single-family residential district under section two sixty-nine five of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
My name is Don Lewis, I'm with D H Lewis Engineering representing the three owners of this property. Their intention is to subdivide the property into four residential lots, one for each of them to build their own homes and then another one to sell off to promote some capital to do their development. Is this, we've been working at this project for probably a year. If you're familiar with the location, property's at the corner of Lake Road and Phillips Road on the southwest corner. There's a house on the very corner that was subdivided off by this board a year before. So this is the remaining lot with a horse barn that was left on this property. So one of these lots will have a horse barn as one of the subdivided lots for one of the houses, that's the intended lot to be sold off. And if you're, again, if you're familiar with this location, the sewer is all around this property, but there's hardly any sewer access and that's what took us so long to get something for the interior view. We attempted to do perk tests, put in septic systems, the soils out there are terrible. And not only that, all the surrounding, this is a low point as far as grade goes, so it was very difficult to deal with some groundwater issues there as well. So we had meetings with neighbors to see if we could get into the gravity sewers that are adjacent subdivisions and that didn't work. We end up with the help of the sewer department and some meetings, we're going to access the gravity sewer that's across the street, across Lake Road and a creek set of subdivisions. They have a manhole that's up by the right of way, at dead ends coming up the hill to Lake Avenue where their access, their main access road is. We're gonna bore under the road and connect onto that and then everything that we have will gravity to that and then that ends up getting. Roundabout goes around, it goes around the hill, gets pumped back up and the sewer plane's right across the street, which is ironic, we can't get to it, but that's how it ends up being. As far as the, the site layout's pretty simple, there's a common drive for two lots that'll be in back off of Phillips Road, be a common drive for two bigger lots back here. Like I said, there's an existing pole barn that sits here, used to be a stable that went with the house that was on the corner. When that got subdivided off, the driveway was left, so one lot will be here, then there'll be a skinny taller lot off of, off of Lake Road. When they subdivided.
So that, that lot, one that you're, that's the one I'm looking at, I believe it's one hundred and twenty-five foot?
Yes, when they subdivided that off, they made sure that they subdivided it off to meet the lot minimum.
Does that meet the requirements?
It's one hundred and twenty-five feet.
But it's one hundred and six in the bed. So what's the mean lot with that then to make a deal?
Yeah, I think we did work with a previous engineer that the original owners had and the planning board and P R C wasn't involved, we did determine that.
So it's got some meister with?
Right.
Yeah, Walt Baker did, Walt Baker, Doug Maggie was the surveyor on that, he did the survey for this lot.
Okay, so lot one is three hundred and thirty-nine feet deep, two hundred and twenty-five. Lot two. That's got the barn out of it.
That's correct, gotta be a little over here.
Yeah, that driveway will be coming off of Phillips Road there?
That, that's correct. There is an existing driveway already that's armed for lot two. And then the house will have a sidewalk off that.
Okay, so now when you come in, and you've got lot three and four, why are these triangles? Why not? I mean, the driveway's going across both lots anyways.
They have, they have a common driveway with the required prior access turnaround. And they're bringing in their water services along that driveway, turn around or turn off for emergency, which is required.
Just the way you're coming in, how can you do anything?
At one, at one time, they were gonna have a fifth lot. They decided against that, they didn't wanna, the two, two of the owners were gonna live on the water lots, the third owner's gonna live on the Lake Road lot. And they, they were gonna have a fifth, a fifth lot up front, you know, there's gonna be two, two new lots on Phillips Road, they eliminated the one, because they didn't want one at the back of the, of the notch.
I don't know, I just.
Well, how would you square it out?
Well, just nurse out, just divide it right there.
Because it's landlocked.
No. You have the driveway to come in, whole block of Phillips Road here anyways. You have the same thing, only instead of a line going so long like this, you just be north to south, right from there, see what I'm saying? No.
The layout of the houses is, has to do with the topography and the way the trees are now and the views that they wanted. They didn't wanna have two long skinny lots like this, they were trying to take advantage of this. This lot here sits up a little higher than the other ones, and this one, it's a real low area over here, so it's tucked in this house here, and then he's keeping all this buffer that's along in the back of these houses, he's not touching any of that, the grading, the grading stage really tight to, to, around the house, because we don't have septic to deal with either, so we haven't to do a lot of yard, yard drainage and grading. They're just into the trees there now where they're developing it, so they're only gonna be doing some limited bank yard stuff. They're trying not to do as, you know, as minimal grading as possible, dealing with some drainage that'll finally get relieved and get out to the county, the county's drainage system. This is kinda landlocked in there now, it's kinda a wall, and they're gonna, they're gonna grade it and get it out to the county's drainage system. And they have, the county has reviewed it, John Raymond has, even though we're at concept stage, John Raymond's already looked at this plan and gave me minimal details and a couple note changes, and other than that, the county's good, we almost have it inside the plans. Including the road board, like I said, we met with the town, not the town highway department, but I think just, just the sewer department, and, oh, and their, their maintenance guy. That's when we came up with the idea to get the, the sewer's gonna be dedicated back here with a, behind lot two and behind the barn. There'll be, there'll be a sewer underneath it owned by the town. It's gonna be installed and paid for by the owners, but that gives them access for all three of them, all four lots to have drainage.
I see on your grading plan where you locate the houses.
Yeah, and that was, that was.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's, it's hard, it's hard to depict on the, on the site layout.
Yep, right.
Look at the grading, you can see well. They're trying to maintain all the buffering around there because it's been like this for years, without disturbing neighbors that are all, that are surrounding everything, it's just a piece of property that never got developed or invested in. Because the owners before had used this, this was a house or a horse paddock and stable area. It's been a well-maintained property over the years.
All right.
And even, even right, when they subdivided this property off, they had to redo the septic in here and it's not the best shape as it is, so we're leaving this stuff off with this maintenance, we're putting it to this guy on the corner to get access.
That'd be smart move, yeah.
And I don't know what the situation is along here for these people, I'm assuming they're connected in the sewers, the sewers run along this.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask you, the current houses right there along white, they must be on the sewers.
I, I think they're still on septic though.
I'm gonna look.
But we left the man, we're gonna leave a manhole by the request of the sewer department, right? We're bringing it across on the south side of Lake Avenue, so then the town, if they wanted to create another district to pick these people up, there's a forest lane that comes here, there's a, there's a pump station somewhere in this neighborhood, like I said, the sewer planes right here, so.
Yeah, pump stations down, down over the hill or a bit?
Oh, I'm sorry, the forest lane comes across here.
Yeah, yeah, pump stations down a little more, yeah.
We've been, yeah, like I said, we've been.
This is a public hearing, but if there is anybody who wishes to speak, yes, sir?
I'm concerned.
Wait a minute, hold on, why don't we, why don't you come up, once you go there, she named the address.
My name is John Loth, I live at thirteen eighty-six Metal Breeze in Nettobuttz, the south side of the development, almost right behind the house, it's proposed on lot three. My concern is with drainage. As you noted, this area is very wet all the time. The, my backyard right now, the last ten feet in the spring is usually underwater for a week or two, and when we have a bad rainfall, you can't even mow the lawn, so I'm concerned about any additional drainage coming in from lot three.
The, the grading, if we look at the topography on this property, we look at the grading plan. We look at the topography on this property here.
Can you talk into the microphone?
I'm sorry. You can see that the topography, if you're along, if you're along one of these lots to the south, this is, this is a high point right here. Everything right now currently with the wet condition you're talking about on this property, the wet, this is all low, so everything, this whole property, our property itself, everybody else drains on it, but us, so we aren't contributing anything.
But are you building up the property so that now will be higher?
A little stream?
Only, only like a person would to build their house above grade, so that, you know, grade drains off, but the way I have it shown, there's a high point in the backyard, the side yard of this house, and it drains, it's still draining around back in the same direction. Everything gets, everything is, everything is designed now is drained, is drained, drained to go out to the county's P O P collection system. So it's already glowing here as it is, problem is there was a little pit in the property right here, so now I've done ditches on both sides of this long driveway to come out to where the P O T already has a whole drainage system that runs north and south of this.
Okay, so the drainage system you're connecting to is on Phillips Road?
Correct, correct. And I believe there's drainage. There's just a ditch along the lake, the Lake Road, and then at the bottom, yeah, there's drainage basins that keep, and it crosses over Phillips, it keeps going east. Yeah, there's, it collects it somewhere, yeah, right here, it collects, everything collects along Phillips Road, crosses here, in daylight it's over here into a creek that must run this way.
And this is what you're building new?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay.
And like I said, these, the two that are building here don't wanna do any more disturbance, they like, they like what is there without getting into too much of this buffer if they can possibly. This one does cut into the tree lines, but it's been gaining twenty, but, yeah, then whatever's in the back here, there's a whole row of trees between the existing lot up on Lake Road too, and we're not, that's on, most of it's on the neighborhood of the last property too, we're not touching any of that. Really, we're really removing it as far as the existing mature trees, because where the sewer comes through, so you get the last man.
I was, I looked at the drawing, did that disturb anything in your backyard, that's still all new and untouched?
Yeah, that's why, this was the end of being really, the nicest lot, it was high and dry. That was the most desired, too.
Is there anything that can be done, is that being developed to help improve the drainage situation in his backyard?
No, it's his drainage, his drainage actually goes to the south, so I can't, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Scott Feltrumelli, I live at thirteen ninety-six Metal Breeze Lane, just behind the south piece of this property that's being proposed.
What was your name again, I'm sorry?
Scott Feltrunelling, thirteen ninety-six Metal Breeze Lane.
Yes, there's one here that, that uses there.
Are you near? I'm here, John, yeah, John's, this gentleman I think is named John, he's like five houses down, same side of the street. I'm two in, two in off of Lake, Lake Road, two houses in.
Oh, okay, you're in, yeah, I'm with you.
So you're down in this section down here?
Yeah.
Where it comes in before you get into these lots at that place?
Roughly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's the big town parcel here on the corner, having to drag it down because of this conservation actually.
Okay, okay, true.
We can, town, yeah, town owns that property, I think we're at least twenty feet, if not more, beyond the.
Hey, guys, you guys hold on private, can we ask you a couple questions? Um, Scott, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
No. I see, I see where John is over here, John Loth, but I don't see Scott, I don't see any, where are you near him?
Well, they take my tax dollars, but they don't know where I live.
No, they got their names on here, but there's no addresses.
Yeah, yeah, so I live, thirteen ninety-six is gonna be off of Phillips Road, it'll be the north side of Metal Breeze Lane, two houses in, off of Phillips.
His backyard is the town, that town dedicated parcel that was done with, with Lake Breeze at children's.
Okay, so he doesn't, so he's not, he's not actually backing up to this?
That's correct, he's on that chunk that comes in.
Right, there's, there's a resident just north of me that is, that property's been in for quite some time, he's a single standing.
Yeah, that's, that's this guy here.
Now I know where Scott lives, where's where?
It's not a very big one, but it was just a quick conversation, we almost settled it on a side tangent, but I'll, I'll voice it. So my concern is sort of the vantage point, right? We buy these homes, these beautiful wooded lots, and we hope they stay that way forever and of course, they don't, but we like to try to reserve as much of it as possible. And so my feeling is when I sit on my deck that I, you know, probably won't see a whole lot going down with that house that's currently there, there is an older home that's been in it for quite some time, arranged, just behind this parcel that is considered green space, or I'm not sure what the terminology they're using for it is, but it's town property. So I, I don't think I'll be, I'll be missing too much of a vantage point there, but as I look to the left towards John's house, woods gets a little thinner in that parcel, that corner kinda starts to creep into this neighborhood a little bit and pinches a little bit more off of that green space as you go deeper into these, these lots. And we may actually see lights, cranes, construction, noise, the vantage point might erode to some degree, and so I'm just kinda wondering if anybody could speak to the preservation of the green space in general and the hopes that, you know, when we maybe more John than me, but we look out the back window, we don't see a skyscraper above the tree line and things of this nature, you kinda know where I'm going with this.
Yeah, now, the code only allows maximum height of thirty-four, which would be in a normal house with a blast setup.
Yeah.
And from where you are, I'm guessing, looking across, there's that house, who's it, Dodd, yeah, Francis Dodd, that corner here?
Is that the one?
That's the one that's right on the corner.
Right behind me.
And he's the one, he's, he's over behind me, yeah.
Yeah, so, so, I don't think you're gonna see any of it.
We won't see much of it.
That house is in the woods.
Yeah.
And they're not really disturbing much of the property other than what the house goes.
And the other piece of this conversation might be worth a quick venture is the runoff for all the properties, John's included, they, they all shallow down to my backyard where I've got a easement or some sort of a tube drainage kinda thing that the town put in, so like John, I get a lot of water build up in the back there in the spring, really year-round. And I just, you know, it sounds like we've allayed these concerns, but I'll throw it out there again, that if there's any disruption to or addition to runoff that seems to, you know, we build these houses up, it starts falling to the wooden area, it finds its lowest ground and it runs down through these backyards that we live in and even my trough or my, my area there, I just, I don't know what that would look like, but.
Why don't we do this, take a suggestion? When you come in for your preliminary approval, why don't you show how you are containing it as to the risk reward of just using elevations?
Yeah, the grading plan I understand.
That's what I'm saying, but go through that at that point, because the way it shows, really all's we can do is not have them putting water on your property or John's or anybody else's.
Sure.
So they have to show that, and then they have to decide, so we can do that, perfect. Okay? So preliminary, we can just be doing that little group.
Sure.
All right?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
The good post and the sign, you have to, the fact that this application is gonna be issued. All right, that's it.
All right, that's it. So that was the last one? That's it. I guess that's it, we're all set. So what, what's, what's the next, and what's that line name? So the next is going to be that one. You have that up there?
January eighteenth or February seventh. And then the following line would be February fifteenth or the March seventh.
Yeah, so because of the holiday, which was submitted, this hasn't been approved by P R C yet because of the way this title went. We also sent a third day referral from the county located most common. So I would give the board more material, obviously, before we do that.
But you keep that all...
That's just, I don't have a mind, immediate...
Oh, okay. I was thinking of just meeting that.
I know.
Okay. I'll be done with that. Okay. That's why I got to do the mail and all that kind of stuff.
We need to take care of that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I guess we're set. Let's, we got some minutes to do? Okay, what's that, right? Yeah, John? I'll make the motion to approve the variance from this separate six. There's a motion? Yes, there's a motion. Make a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're good with that, that's it.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, folks, I guess we're set. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, it's, uh, there's some pretty significant houses that I'm saying.
Pretty much more...
Together, together.
Oh, was it? Or is it something like that?
Yeah, that would be the basic.